Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, June 23rd, 2008. This evening, City Council will be meeting for a public hearing initially, and then we will go into planning and development, then utilities, then finance and personnel committees. First public hearing concerning a community development block grant, Mayor Wile.
Actually, this is the second one, the second of two. The previous one, I think, was 19th of May, maybe? This one is the second public hearing of the CDVG formula allocation money, and it's given to the City of Athens on an annual basis by the Ohio Department of Development. This grant is to be submitted the 27th of this month, which is coming up very quickly. Let's see, the city has been notified, Department of Development, that the grant allocation for this year, fiscal year 2008, would be $91,000. This is a grant that's not a competitive form allocation in that program. It covers a broad range of activities, including economic development projects, street water supply, drainage, sanitary sewer improvements, park acquisition improvements, demolition of unsafe structures, rehabilitation of housing, and neighborhood facilities. The activities must be designed to primarily benefit low and moderate income persons, aid in the prevention and elimination of slums and blight, and meet an urgent community need. Past two years, we have covered both the enhancement of the Athens West Building and rebuilding of the concrete part on the Fort Fairview steps, which have gone to be, are possibly being completed. This year, there is a part of it also renovation of Granville and Mary Streets. This year, the present proposal is, for this round, is actually the widening of Harold Avenue, which is, as you know, is off Union Street. That's the proposal we have right now. But we're open to suggestions, which is why we have a public hearing.
Comments for the mayor? Is there anyone wishing to speak to this public hearing? Yes, Service Safety Director, Mosley.
I just wanted to clarify, on Harold Avenue, we had a traffic count study done, and it averages over 1,000 vehicles per day, primarily servicing the Appalachian Community Visiting Nurses Association hospice and health services. This will do a partial street widening at the intersection, a storm sewer replacement, sidewalk and ADA construction just in that, at that intersection at Union, and with an asphalt overlay.
Okay. Yes, Member Sands.
And would it go all the way to visiting nurses, or just to, I don't know where their driveway starts and Harold stops.
It will remain in the, just on the city public street.
Which is...
Does it end right?
Basically, just to the railroad?
I think that's the railroad bend. Part of the activity is also, we're doing surveying of that area, since it's, we have some of the numbers and we have some of the layout of the place, but it's always been one of those streets that's kind of been skewered from the right of way. That's one of the problems. There's a telephone pole just kind of like sitting in the middle of the street, kind of. I realize in retrospect...
Boy, is it ever. I said, "Boy, is it ever." Is there, would this be, I don't mean to jump on your comment, Jim, but would that be an opportunity that that pole could be eliminated or moved? Are we planning on doing that?
Yes.
Good.
Okay.
I cannot believe that that thing has not hit on a regular basis.
Andy may actually attempt to get that moved this year, in anticipation that we can do the widening next year.
I'm sorry, Jim, did you wish to continue? Member Mosley?
I have a question for, and this is a recollection from the street tour that we had in April, and was there a discussion when we were on Harold Avenue about trying to coordinate something with the widening with the development of apartments that are going on at the same time?
That's actually part of this year's paving program. They are actually, with the new, what is it called there?
Harold Square.
Development, they are, they are providing a share cost in terms of they'll be putting in the curb and area in front of their development.
Okay, so it's already been coordinated?
One, oh, two more things. One is that everybody has signed the public, the records as everybody's come in, please do so. The other thing is reading this, and it's, as I say, a prepared script. One of the things I realize that we will be talking about and I will be bringing up is demolition of unsafe structures further down the line in terms of appropriating money. So I'm going to actually think in terms of actually using some of this money if that's the case, depending on what we have. Again, the 91 does not, part of that goes to housing already, so it's less than 91. The intent, of course, is that we have some issues with houses that should be condemned, and the cost of assessing those condemnation has to be done by an engineer and totally. So the next thing to do is actually acquiring money for that. So we might chip into this piece of money just for doing that. And again, I do not know, we don't have a total project number, do we, for Harold Avenue? No. So just to let you know.
Other comments?
Question.
Yes, Member Bain.
What's the procedure for demolishing a house?
As far as I know, we send a letter. I do not have it with me right now, but there's, it's in the...
Give me the rough outline.
It's on the, in the Athens City Code, actually. We have to send certified letter.
I don't have that in my...
No, I don't, I don't either, so we're both at a loss here. We can speculate if you want.
Well, you've probably looked at it more recently than I have. I just wondered what you, so you send a letter to the owner?
You send a letter to the owner?
A certified letter?
Yes.
Okay.
You have to actually give them time to address it, if I understand correctly. Then you have to, we basically have to tear it down. We have to evaluate how much it's going to cost to tear it down, the issues of tearing it down. And if I understand, eventually, we have to go and proceed against the proper owner for the cost of tearing it down. In the meantime, you've put, you've put a certain amount of expenses out. There's been an ongoing dialogue between Code and myself about, well, first of all, they wanted to revamp the procedure because they feel it's clunky, but I think we're probably limited to what we can do on that. The other conversation has been is where to get the money for the actual appraisals for the tearing down. I told them to take out professional services, which is what they use for many of the special halls and the, what's the other thing? They use it for something else.
Mowing.
Mowing, mowing services. And they're down to, I think, the last time I checked, is about 1,500. They're estimating, two houses I have and tracking right now is between $200 to $300 each. So you could see, we could run, we could run low on money in that fund pretty quickly. On the other hand, we can take it out of the public hearing, CDVG grant money, provided it's in a same, in the proper location.
$200 or $300 to demolish them, you say?
No, to evaluate them, to sell them.
To evaluate them, and you have them evaluated by an outside person?
Yes, that's the way I'm told.
And we were doing something like this on Grosvenor, and I was trying to...
We don't do it often, that's the thing.
That's the last time. Okay, then the other thing is, could you repeat for me what infrastructure improvements are also going to be done on Har- Harold?
On Harold, Harold Avenue?
Harold Square.
She's feeding me information here. Okay, basically, the widening and a storm sewer replacement area there. We'd like to add the sidewalks and basic work on that. What you're seeing is that's an unsafe corner with Larry's Dog House at that corner, the drive-in, and that's been a problem that's been brought up to us several times, even while I was on council.
And people parking in the right of way at the optometrist?
That's part of the reason why we have to have it surveyed, so everybody knows where their parts are.
Okay. So this is an existing city street that we are upgrading?
Yes.
Okay.
Mostly because of the amount of traffic that's going through. I think everybody was amazed that we're doing 1,000 cars a day, and I, basically, most people think it's a dead end, but it's really got a, you know, the Visiting Nurses Association down there has got a lot of, gets a lot of traffic.
Plus construction.
Plus construction.
Okay, there.
Other comments for the mayor? Is there anyone wishing to speak at this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for the community development block grant and move on to the planning and development committee. Member Phillips.
Thanks, Mr. President. We have several items on the agenda, and I think possibly some miscellaneous as well. There are two minor lot splits in the Plains listed on my agenda, but I only have a memo about one of them, as far as I'm aware. So I'm going to reverse the order and start with the minor lot split with a variance on East Fourth Street, which I think is the Rinaldi Lot Split. Okay, now I'll have the other one when we get to it. I spoke with Mr. Rinaldi. We do have a recommendation from the Planning Commission that was unanimous to grant the lot split and a variance based on lot size. It's really just a slight discrepancy in terms of the lot size. The reason our subdivision regulations require 20,000 square feet is there is no curb and gutter in that area, so it's really a stormwater issue, and, you know, this is pretty close to the required size anyway. So we do have that recommendation. Do folks have any concerns or questions? So we can put that one out for first reading at our next regular meeting?
Just, I was wondering if there's any question about splitting that lot further?
Mayor Wile, did you, was there any discussion about that at the Planning Commission?
You're talking about the Rinaldi one on Fourth. I don't see how it could, it could be at this point. It's very odd shaped and it's, and again, part of the, part of the problem is it's just a hair bit under the 20,000 square foot requirement. So when you say splitting it again, they'd have to come in front of us again to do that.
Just wondering what the agenda was.
Oh, the explanation we got that...
No, no, I just meant, I just want to make sure, they had, they had actually said that, right? That they were through?
No, they didn't, but they have to come in front of the Planning Commission, and the history of this case would be such that you'd say, "How many times can you do something like that? Go to the well." I do have some paperwork on the other one. I assume you got the recommendation, Debbie, or nothing more?
The clerk just handed this to me, so...
I have some of the flat stuff. Did you get this stuff? No?
It looks like there's a complete packet here. I don't know if other members of council have it. It's a recommendation from the 19th for variances, for a lot split as an addition to the Village of Verity at 40 West Third Street in the Plains. And they want lot sizes of 8,666, 9,310, those two different lot sizes, where 20,000 is the permitted minimum. And also, there's a variance requested for lot width. And it looks like Mr. Hoyzington is here. If you want to describe this to us, you're welcome to, or you can just see if people have questions.
If you have any questions, that's fine.
Okay. Mayor Wile?
On the Planning Commission, this is actually three lots that exist, and he's combining them into two lots. So he's actually taking one lot and splitting it between the two.
Do other members have this?
Probably not. Okay, okay, one of, let's pass this around. I did have a recommendation. I would show what you have, but I don't have. The maps are on the second or third page there. Okay. I don't think there should be enough to go around. And again, I wasn't sure if you had gotten it or not. The usual clerical help is not there today.
Okay, so there currently are three lots there?
Yes.
And the request is to change them into two lots?
Uh huh. In the case being, neither one, they are smaller than the prescribed limit, but at the same time, the effort here is to actually make it less non-conforming, but it's still technically non-conforming. And again, it falls into the three mile limit, which is why we addressed it. It was not given a case number. This was discussed as communication, and, but most council, Planning Commission, I felt that it was appropriate. So we will assign it a case number.
Okay. And there aren't any structures on any of the existing three lots?
There, there's a structure, 40 West Third is a house. They owned a house and two more lots.
Okay.
And we took the middle lot and kept it with the house, and so, well, basically, a lot and a half converted to lots.
And there's no, I don't see the structure on any of the drawings that we have, and we had an issue recently where a house had been built across lot lines. It's completely on one of the lots.
If it's on...
Would you, can I come up and speak into my ear to hear it there, just so people can hear you and tell them?
Yeah.
That will work.
No, the house, Ken Highland surveyed it, and the house is clearly, the house was already on one, to begin with. If you have this, this flat, the house was on this far left lot. This is the new line up the middle, so the house is way over on that lot, and then this is, it has no permanent structure.
Other questions?
You, so one lot's entirely empty, the, the new lot that's been combined with the half, and you intend to build on that, or it's just...
There are going to be some people using it for a, not a temporary structure, but a semi-temporary structure. They put a concrete, they want to put a concrete slab on it and put a, a mobile home that will be moved, you know, not permanently there, but set up as such. It's an old retired couple who lives here part-time and lives in Florida part-time.
So there is, I thought, a mobile home on that, on this property already?
It's a motor home, more or less. It's not a mobile home, really, but yeah.
I've had an inquiry since the Planning Commission asking about what the future intentions are of that lot.
Well, that's, as far as I know, that's it right now, yeah. I mean, that's what they're using it for. So it's what they want to use it for, forever, as far as I know.
Permanent home structure?
Yes.
So it's a request for a variance, but it would essentially reduce the existing non-conformity in that location?
Yes.
Do council members have any other questions about this? Do you want to go ahead and bring this up for first reading at our next meeting?
Yes.
Could you clarify for the people who are new, just very quickly, why this, that we're permitting one with $10,000 and the others had to be $20,000?
The subdivision regs were amended five years ago or so, and it, we increased in the, we have, our subdivision regulations apply in the three mile area, and council increased the lot size requirement in areas that don't have curb and gutter because of stormwater management concerns. So if there's a new, larger subdivision going in, you know, the hope is that developers would go ahead and build storm and, or curb and gutter so that it would control stormwater better in residential areas. In areas that those improvements aren't made, a larger lot size kind of reduces the impact if there's, if there are problems with stormwater. So some of the existing lots that were approved before that change was made are smaller than the current requirement.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Next thing on the agenda is an ARC grant for an access road, and I think Paula has some information for us, or perhaps the mayor?
Can I start it off?
In 2007, you authorized us to submit metter into agreements with our Appalachian Regional Commission and other agencies for grant funds to pursue access roads, one for Holzer Clinic and Metter Works, and the other one for Circle Drive.
Hickory Creek. Essentially, the pre-application deadline is July 1st, and the mix of it is such that you, the city, or somebody has to come up with a part of the parcel. I believe, I've discussed this with Nancy at one point, and this, having had this conversation about Holzer Clinic, the question is, how do we go about funding the, we estimate about $100,000, about $120,000, the, over and above what the grant will give us. So that's where the question relies.
Just before the meeting, I was given a copy of a memo from 2004, which describes this road as not having been accepted as a public street. And I don't know if there's an update on that.
To my knowledge, there isn't.
So there's a right of way, but we haven't yet accepted the, the street improvements that were done? I just, I'm not familiar with the current status of this and how that would affect our application.
Neither am I. That's a good question.
There is a portion of Circle Drive that's unmaintained right now, and that's the south?
South part of, uphill side of it.
Yes, coming down. It's viewed as an unmaintained at this time. Part of this project would be to bring it back into full usage, and then when we hit where the existing businesses are, requires an asphalt overlay in that section. And again, there is the lighting requirements that are required.
And how did we get to the point where we have Sears, Harpik Place, Susan Gwynne's office, among others, Harpik's on a road that isn't a road?
Good question. I do not have the answer.
You do have the answer?
I do not have the answer.
Oh, no! I thought you had the answer.
No.
This addresses it. It says...
And I'm reading it. I didn't get it till just, just now.
And there's also a, some Planning Commission, go ahead. Are you going to read it for the record?
The following is my recommendation. One, the proposed development plan be accepted pending review of the unpaved cul-de-sac. And then it talks about other issues with regards to that road, bringing it up to being accepted. So the, the Service Safety Director's recommendation was that the development be allowed to go ahead on that cul-de-sac, and then as far as accepting the road, other hurdles had to be met, or left over, whatever hurdles happened to them, I guess. And...
Left over.
Until clearance has been approved, Mr. Harpik may continue construction. So, anyway.
So the long and the short of it is, it was a larger parcel, and Mr. Hayes split off about four and left a big one, and then Tom Harpik took over, and he split off a couple, and the bigger, biggest one was sold to develop, to the developer of the nursing home. So we have about six or seven, eight, six lots, seven lots on a road that isn't developed?
Well, it, I mean, there's been, there is a road there, but it looks to me...
There's a path there.
According to this memo, that, you know, we hadn't accepted it as a public street, and it, it was supposed to be inspected by our street director. And that's my question, is whether that happened, if we know the, the status of that.
Well, as you know, that precedes both of us in terms of...
Yeah.
I do not know. I'm looking at this thing, and the conversation's mostly from '96. This particular memo is from '04. Good question.
So in the other access road that, that we were working on, the match is being met by the property owners.
Yes.
Is that what you're proposing here?
Yes.
In which case, then the construction can occur and the inspection can occur, and the road can be accepted after the fact, if the property owners pay the match, if we're not using public dollars for the construction?
Sounds easy.
That's not my understanding what the proposal is.
Okay.
It is indeed that the city, we have to submit a commitment letter, whether it be from the private entity or from the city or what have you. And these individual business owners have not been contacted regarding this. Discussion recently was had, whereas if the city wanted this to occur, the city would indeed commit to it and then assess the property owners, just like we do on other improvements.
But not having the road accepted at this point?
It has to become public. Part of the engineering proposal is indeed to do the real estate acquisition, have those things all in place. And that is estimated almost 62, 62,500.
Well, Paula, will they have to strip the top off and redo the underlay on that, which is, I mean, you sounded like you there were just going to slap some concrete, something on top of it?
I didn't bring the entire package up here, but I believe it's an asphalt overlay of like three inches in that section. Now, of course, the other one's going to require the full blown.
Because when we were having our finance meeting, I know Jim was talking about how much more traffic there is with New to You, and, you know, maybe how the opening needs to be changed or widened with a turn lane and...
It would all have to be brought up to the specifications that they require, which are pretty stringent.
I would wonder, and I wonder if Andy could check them again on the under, under materials? After our UU experience, yes, remember?
So... Just, we are up against a great deadline, so...
Not now, but before, you know, we've got, we'll be dealing with this in February, right?
This is pre-application.
Right, and this is, right. This is pre-application. If we're selected to submit a full application, we'll get into more detail, and again, additional commitment letters that can be tightened at that time.
So do, how do we proceed with the assessment question, since we don't have any more meetings of council before you submit?
We could commit to the money and then start the, the assessment procedure. That requires council to, you know, if we have, if we have the specs, then you just say there's a necessity of need and create an assessment on it.
So we go through the process like we did on the sidewalk on Stewart?
Yes, very similar to that. Kenny Drive is another example of doing that.
And did we, we did communicate with property owners on Stewart prior to moving ahead with that process?
With assessment, yeah.
Yes.
That's where my question comes from. This is a pre...
Pre-application.
The pre-application. And if the pre-application is accepted, then we need to follow it up with...
A full application.
A full application, which includes all this stuff. And if, at that point, we would have time to notify the property owners of our intent to, to assess them, and if, if that was termed, if that became, you know, if we came aware that that was not possible, then we, we could drop the application at that point.
Yes.
Because one of the other things that was important for the access road out by Holzer is that they wanted the opportunity to review the costs that were, because they are paying the match and any cost overruns on the overall project above what the grant covers, they wanted to make sure their people have a chance to weigh in on decisions that are being made that, that might contribute to that. And, you know, this, I don't know, but it seems like we should be in communication with the property owners before we go down that road.
Well, the problem is that we have, and I, we haven't found them yet, I think Debbie's made a valiant effort, but Planning Commission documents had said that the property owners were willing to pay the cost of the upgrade on the lower end. And I will find it. I know I've seen it. It's got yellow magic marker on it. And so they have, when they ask, I mean, if you go through this, you will see, when they asked for additional splits, they were fully, the property owner, at least one of them, the major one, was fully aware of what was going to happen. I don't see how you could read this and not know that they're going to have to bring the road up to speed, up to par, up to our standards.
So, Member Mosley, I think you had something a minute ago.
Part of this is just my being new to council. Can you clarify for me? I'm not sure I understand how we are handling this in comparison to how it was handled for Holzer and the access road there. Is this being handled in the same way? It's not the same thing?
It's not the same thing.
Okay.
But we are handling it the same way. The beneficiaries pay, right?
Fiscally, it's handled pretty much the same way.
Fiscally, it is being handled the same way.
We're covering, the property owners are going to have to pay the residual that isn't covered by the grant.
Okay.
The difference, the main difference I see right now is the, the fact that this is, is a unimproved planted road, whereas the other one was all essentially property that had easement requirements, easement requirements and heating requirements.
So the, the entire right of way exists. It's, the issue is that it's not improved and not accepted as a public street?
The way I understand it, although you're implying, this letter implies that the lower, the northern half or the downhill side is not, has not been accepted. I assume it was platted. Again, it's before my time.
And we aren't made of wood?
Yes, this is for a pre-application, which would indicate there's some time to work out these details. I, I would, you know, make, like to make sure the minutes reflect that there are some issues to work out about, you know, communicating with the property owners and making sure that, you know, we know the exact status of the road and what needs to happen in terms of inspection of the, the current base and, you know, the various issues that we've discussed. So, and you have, what, when do you need to submit this?
We'll submit the pre-application as due July 1st.
We won't have a regular meeting before then?
Right.
Is it... Is it one of those things that we can approve at our next meeting and-
Actually, the approval, again, coming from the '039, '07, you already gave us a billion to approve it. Really, what I want to do is make sure that we're all aware of what the cost balance is going to be. I'm not going to commit to saying we're going to spend dollars unless we're aware of the fact that we're going to have council come back and assess for those dollars.
Okay.
Because on the sign-off pre-application, we're saying we're good for the money, but at the same time, we're cognizant of the fact that there's other parties, prior parties are going to fill that bound, that gap.
So you don't need us to approve anything right now?
No, I'm just trying, I'm just trying not blindside you and you not blindside me.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else on that one?
Just could you clarify, are we allowing Holzer to look at the change orders on that construction? Is that really happening?
We haven't even been awarded the grant yet.
Well, that's good. I just thought that was pretty unprecedented for a small amount of money, a lot of power there. Should that happen? Will that happen?
Should we be awarded the grant? Will they be able to veto change orders?
I don't think they'll have that authority. I think they want to be at the table.
Yeah, just so they can follow the cost.
You mean call them on their cell phone and say they want extra money for gravel? Is that what we're talking about or is it a different matter? I just, you know, I don't know how this would work. It's something I've never seen before. I must have been on autopilot when you did that.
I don't think they want to be blindsided by cost overruns, but at the same time, when they, you say nixing it, I assume that they want something that's a quality product.
It's going to have to be built to reasonable specs, you know.
Well, to ours.
Ours, yes.
Our specs. I mean, there's no question.
Yeah.
And so is there a chance that this particular road may be more pricey than we're looking at right now?
Which one are you talking about?
The one we're looking at now, the other one we've already passed.
I don't know. Talking to Andy, he almost implies that it's not going to go over, but I think he's being more optimistic. He looks at the contingency portion and says, well, we won't hit that forty-two thousand. He looks at project site inspection fees by others. He says, well, twenty-five thousand, maybe not, you know, but I would always, I'd always assume the high end rather than the low.
Who did the engineering, RJ?
RJ. I didn't know if Mike is sort of objective, does, did you do any work?
Yes, I did.
Oh.
I'm here on a total different-
Right.
Okay. The one, the one thing to bear in mind is just the cost of asphalt and oil is always on the increase.
Right.
So that's the big X factor in any paid private road.
Right.
I am aware that, the conversation I had with Andy, he was surprised how little the asphalt went up this year considering, but that's just more shock or-
Is it polyanna or what?
Don't say it aloud.
I know. Don't want to jinx it.
Anything more on that? All right. I have two miscellaneous. One is really just an update. People did receive a memo from the planning commission. We had sent a request that they consider rezoning the parcel in, that's owned by the city of Athens in front of the depot as open space. And the planning commission voted not to make that zoning change because the land is under a fairly long-term lease and it's already restricted to use for parking and landscaping only. So they just didn't see a need to make a zoning change. So that's just kind of an update unless people really want. And if you recall, at the time, there was, this discussion came about because of a request around some possible development on that site. And we basically asked the developer, bring us everything at the same time instead of different pieces of it. So I believe they're going to be making an application that will either go, that would be a planned unit development. So we'll probably be seeing it again, but I don't think we need to take any action right now. I just wanted to kind of report that we did get a response from the planning commission on that request of ours.
And I'd like to follow up with a comment on that, since I was the one who was so adamant about it. I would like to note for the record that the person, we got the information and we forwarded on to the planning commission because I happen to have it in my basement. It's no longer existent. But the problem is that record-keeping doesn't exist in a systematic way, I think, from administration to administration. And so now you have a parcel that's zoned M that had, and, you know, the first decision was made without any paperwork, for goodness sakes. And it's, it was a pretty, it's still for me, a very serious question, whether it should be an M-zone, because, you know, in fact, we may change the M-zone. Right now, the M-zone does not allow development of housing. So I personally think that the zoning should reflect what we're expecting from the place and not just be an M-zone because it's always been that way. And I don't think it's an unprecedented thing. The other item I would like to see before we proceed is what the historic preservation officer, Mary Ann Peters, is a good choice, said about it. And I don't know, she was sitting here in the audience the night we were talking about it over the sign-out at. And she has, she's, she works for the state. And she could tell us what it would be because when I was down there, because the students were practicing their interview skills and I was down there jumping up and down. And I was thinking that it might really be out on one side quite a bit in front of the actual building, the structure. And I guess I'd like to know for sure what's going to happen.
What part would be out in front of the structure?
The one that's where the bonded station used to be. Can you, were you here then?
What is that? I know, I have seen pictures-
The bonded station toward-
Yes, 101, Caryout 101 or something like that, 110.
No, that's the other end. The one-
And the bonded station was in front of it.
The bonded station was over by the tracks.
Yes.
By Buckingham Palace there, you know.
Buckingham Palace.
OU, OU is Human Resource.
Human Resources. Okay. I think that, was that track G or something like that or E? F is the corner.
If I say yes, will you accept that? I don't know.
Okay.
Did you have a historic preservation person look at it?
I've had some discussion about, it is on a historical register. That means you can't, you can't tear into it or paint it, candy color it, I don't think. After that, in terms of placement of other buildings, there's no real law or code about context. And that was a discussion that I think you were discussing, you were bringing up is the idea that you don't want to put, you know, four-story buildings around the depot close together. I did find in an inbox over in the executive secretary's office, a map showing the little, where the structures were intended to be. I'll put, it looks like there's two of them, so I'll pass one up to you guys. This is just going through the files.
But couldn't, you know, we just saw that they, that for the Antiquities Act, they bought, somebody bought, somebody from another place has a great price of our, of our antiquities, bought a mound in the plains to preserve it.
Yes.
Meanwhile, the summit is destroying those other mounds up there, which even have barley seeds in them. I mean, I consider this a place where there is a choke point where we can say, we want to see, we want to do better than just the minimum. This is our heritage. We got a million dollars to preserve it and I think we need to make sure we're preserving it. Now I'm ranting again.
Okay, in the context of preservation at this point, discussion, you know, what I was hearing from the chair of the planning department, planning commission, is that the way the agreement was written is that that front part would be open space for parking and green space. Realize, you know, I think it says actually landscaping because they don't use the term green space at that time. Of course, that of course brings up the concept of what, what ratio are we talking about? You know, are we talking about, you know, 10 feet of green space and 100 feet of parking? And I think since '87 or whatever the timeline was, and it goes back pretty far, the spectrum of what, what's, where the balance is, has probably changed. At this point, you have, you have the rezoning part. You, from what I've heard from Debbie is that you want to see a PUD plan in place before you rezone it. That's my understanding at this point.
I'd like some indication of how tall the buildings will be and where they are.
That we haven't seen.
But, you know, I just, I would like, since it's not very, we've got time to hear from somebody like, Mary Ann Peters works for the State Historical Society. She was a complainant about the sign we were going to put up. Reece, Mary Ann, what did I call her?
Reece, is it?
Reece. She's had several names. Did I call her Mary Ann Peters? That was her first name before she married Compton.
Okay.
Okay. Then thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
And Mary Ann Reeves has offered some comments after an earlier hearing, so I know she'd be about the depot and she'd be receptive to, you know, offering some opinions now again.
Okay. All right. The other miscellaneous that I have is just that I understand the planning commission had some conversation about B3 and restaurants. And there was a discussion quite a while back about the fact that the B3 zone used to limit restaurants, say they had to be 200 feet away from residential zones if they had to drive through a summer garden over a roadhouse. But that in a, that a previous city council had taken out those specific things that were limited and made it apply to all restaurants, which made it be stricter than the B1. So I didn't know if we actually got a recommendation back from you on that.
No, no, the consensus was at that time that we, and I think it was, again, the chair of the planning commission who brought up the fact that we may want to be, look, at least have a public hearing on that. The planning commission public hearing is actually optional, the planning commission side of it, for the council is required. I think she felt, she actually asked Steve to go and review that. So as it stands now, we did not put a recommendation forward except for the fact that we agree with what your assessment is on that. But we want to get more input, I guess, have at least one public hearing.
And would you do that at your meeting July 3rd?
I don't have the paperwork and I went to time papers, but we have to-
You need more notice for that.
Yes, I think, I think so. Twenty days.
Okay. If, if you decided that since we're required to hold a hearing, that you wouldn't need to, if you give us a recommendation at that meeting, we would be required to hold a hearing. So if we started it through and scheduled the hearing, we could try to get it moving.
Okay.
Would members of council be comfortable if we got a recommendation like that, going ahead and starting it through? Because we did talk about it quite a while ago.
Yes.
You mean the B3?
Just the B3, not any of the other discussion that has been going on about restaurants and noise and everything else. That's all, if there's more to do, that'll come later.
Of course.
Okay?
Could, could you clarify, just, you know, maybe the planning commission could clarify, at what point this change was made? I guess they're on the planning commission, they're on, was it the last change that was done?
It was the change that was done before I was on council, when Ed was the chair of planning and development. And we have a copy of a, of the zoning code that has lots of strike-through and you can see the, the old language in there and the strike-through. So it was in that, would it have been '03?
More than that.
2003 was when there was, the planning, zoning board was done, zoning code was done, '23. And then what you're talking about is the strike-through that occurred?
Yeah.
But the actual process was done by the planning commission, right? After council?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, I mean-
And read it by council too.
Yeah. Council started it, they finished it, really?
I don't know who did the strike-throughs, actually.
Oh, Debbie did the strike-throughs because that's the way we, I mean, that's not her fault though.
No.
I mean, the concepts were there from the planning commission and that's what we passed. I mean, it wasn't a big council initiative.
Okay, one of the other things that was brought forward to us was the noise ordinance part of the B3s. We had, part of our discussion was between both of those aspects, you know, to changing outdoor operations, if you remember, was one of the things you recommended. I think it's, I forget which resolution, R3, I think it was maybe. So those are kind of co-mingled in our, on our planning commission plate because they're both B3s. We could probably separate them out if you think that's necessary.
That'd be nice.
Okay.
Remember Patrick said that he thought that the code as it was written is up to the task, didn't he? On noise?
I said something like that. In fact, I don't know if that's, it was the exact words I would-
Well, I promise I won't put you on it. It seemed to me that you, that you said it was-
Chris? The notes that I had from being at the planning commission last Thursday said that there would be two public hearings required.
But we got feedback from Steve saying that one is optional, actually. The planning commission side is. And we've waived one before when we did some zoning changes recently.
When council's required to have a hearing, I think the planning commission hearing is optional. It's kind of, you know, may depend on the level of public interest and whether it seems like there are a lot of people who want to have that kind of input.
I think related to the noise, the outdoor operations, there would be a lot of interest.
I think you might.
Which is why we're-
And they think they should be afforded the opportunity.
Yes.
Yep.
And that's it. They got, basically because they're both B3s, they got co-mingled at the discussion. I mean, we're about to, we're about to amend this section of code and we have two different pieces of, two different resolutions and desires from council. Okay. That's about it.
All right. And then Nancy has an item, a miscellaneous item.
Well, this was, I just want to make sure everybody had a copy of it. Phil Goldsberry passed it to me last time because I was still here and I carried it around and then left it on the dining room table. And now you have it in front of you. It's June 9th, 2008. Phil, if you'd like to speak to it, come on up or if you, they haven't had a chance to read it because I just gave it to them.
They haven't had a chance, you say, or?
No, they have not.
Well, maybe it'd be just as well it'd be read down. I could elaborate on it if there were questions, but it kind of speaks for itself, Nancy.
Okay. So would people want to read it right now or?
I'll be, I'll be available to answer questions if you'd like to do that, if you want to read it or delay it, you know, whenever you're forced to do.
Okay, I would prefer, I think since it's Bill's area that he, and he left, but, okay, on June 9th, members of Athens City Council, this communication is in reference to a 52308 article published in the Athens Messenger. Should the historic statue of Hebe be displayed or shielded from the public, might I point out the following facts? The proposal brought forth before the city council on 21 April is quite simple. It's requested the statue, now located behind locked doors and gates at the water plant, be relocated to the Athens Community Center so it can be enjoyed by all citizens. Two, the restores of the statue during the 1970s were Mayor Don Barrett deceased, who authorized the restoration. Superintendent Drennan Goldsberry deceased, who supervised the effort and especially Carol Riley retired, who accomplished most of the actual restoration. To imply the current water plant employees were anyway responsible for the restorations that disservice to the deceased and retired. Achievements of others should not be so nonchalantly stricken away and bestowed. Three, the admonition of no matter what, please leave Hebe with the people who have protected and treasured her these years rings hollow with those of us who not only note the obvious deterioration of her surfaces, Hebe surfaces, but also take note of the marked deterioration of the surfaces of the statue located in the front yard, which was acquired by the water plant in 1999. To most people, protecting and treasuring applies thoughtful regard and maintenance, not neglect. Four, I guess, but acid rain, guys. In addition to wandering aimlessly down a pathway strewn with public graffiti, allusions to four-letter words and paint splattered in public, private property, damaged mailboxes and light fixtures, stolen scrap metal, proposals for an additional statue at the armory or one in the middle of the proposed roundabout in Richland Avenue might be appropriate concerns in some quarters, but all have absolutely nothing to do with the conditions inside the virtually new Athens Community Center where Hebe's statue will be relocated. It has been, it has been held in the past that, by some plant employees, that she needs to remain at the plant to honor those responsible for saving and restoring her. If this is to be so, then in what ways have previous mayors Kenneth Lanz, Raymond Shepherd, Don Barrett, and plant superintendent T.H. Goldsberry, and employee Carol Riley been honored, all of whom were involved in Hebe one way or another, dating from the 1950s up through the 1970s? I don't believe the plaque or any recognition whatsoever of these officials is associated with the statue where it's currently located. The Hebe in 1895 has now been locked away for seven years, several years. Athens City Council can cause this disenfranchisement of the citizens of Athens to come to an end by directing relocation of the statue to the Athens Community Center where citizens may, many for the first time, be able to enjoy this heirloom, which belongs properly to the citizens, where those responsible for restoration may be properly honored. The statue does not uniquely belong to a handful of employees at the water plant, any more than a retired or semi-retired police cruiser would belong to the city policeman at the police department. That's kind of, okay. I was kind of giggling at that one. A crown fit. City council has power to make acquisition on behalf of the citizens. They also similarly have power to dispose of or relocate assets to benefit the public. Councils have been known on occasion to procrastinate or kick the problem upstairs. That would be most unfortunate outcome in this instance. Bill Bias, not here, President of City Council stated, "The statue is behind a fence due to 9/11. The statue is not being enjoyed by anyone, anybody." President Bias also noted one week later, in part, "Athens Messenger, 42808. At first, it seemed like a no-brainer. These observations were true then and remain so today. Possessiveness of a few city's employees notwithstanding." This is signed by Phil Goldsberry. And I would like to note for the record that we have two of our groups that are working, that are reviewing this, and I believe that Kent is the person in charge, even though he's not on the agenda. What will you be hearing about this in the next month, you think?
I'm guessing that it'll take a little bit longer than a month, since I'm still trying to get members of the subcommittee together to create dialogue on this.
Okay. So we have an arts commission that council has given the task of, generally, not even in, not in this case as much as others as well, of looking at public art. And so we're following our own rules, basically.
Correct.
Okay. And then the second thing is the recreation board, right? And we have to hear from them as well.
Actually, we did. I spoke to the President of the Recreation Board, Dave Palmer, some time ago, and he had polled the members, not in an open meeting, but polled them individually, and they were unanimously in favor of the concept of relocating Hebe to the community center, but would obviously require more information about final arrangements before they could make a final approval.
Okay, so could I say then, probably, not, probably, this isn't going to happen before our recess for the 1st of August for a month. I don't see it happening. But we will have information back from the constituencies, and at that point, Bill Bias will obviously be in charge, be the president, and he will take care of it. The question is, will we deal with it, first of all, and then how will we approach these? As long as the advisory board has time, you know, they might want to put it in writing and have it official, rather, if that's what they're finding.
And my subcommittee's going to report to the Arts Commission, and then the Arts Commission is going to make an official recommendation on all the information that they collect.
Okay. So we have a process and we're following it. And the first question, of course, will be, will we deal with this? And then, well, we'll accept the reports, and then the question is, what will we do? Okay, so Phil, you've been here, you've done this, you know it takes time.
Pardon?
Give us a break.
Yes. Yeah, I'd just like to point out in my, the memo that you just read from...
If you could come up to one of the microphones, so people at home can hear you.
The memo that you just read from was a result of this article, which was a note that I had made to the Athens Messenger and side-by-side with this, another article. And so this is not being taken out of context, this is in context of that particular article that was written by Ms. Stone. The other thing would be in the memo, I had pointed out that councils have a tendency to kick things upstairs sometimes, okay? I don't mean anything by that, except just experience. And if I might just say, two years ago, when this issue came up, it's my understanding that from Arts West people, that the Arts Commission had considered the same kind of thing, and had said it's an administrative decision. Okay, and so that's, that was what I was referring to there. The other thing that I'd refer to, excuse me, was that back in 1979, I remember the East State Street widening project. Council, city council voted four to three to widen it. The next meeting, I think it was, they voted four to three to submit it to referendum, and that was defeated in referendum at 58% to about 42. And you know the results of that. It took 20 years to get that project on the road again, and it went from about $850,000, we had every bit of the money, up to better than $8 million. And you see, sometimes just procrastinating leads to bigger problems and longer misery. So that's what I'm trying to say. Can we not just get it back to the people and be done with all the other possibilities that we don't want to really think about, such as referendum and that sort of thing? I'd like to see it just be decided by council. We do it and be done with it, and then all the people can enjoy it. Simple, simply that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil.
Any questions that they have of any parts of this, I'd be happy to answer them, or try to. Okay? Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Any other miscellaneous for Planning and Development?
Not the utilities.
Okay, at the outset, I'm going to, I have miscellaneous only on utilities committee, and Alahu, you want to make your announcement?
Yeah, I just have an announcement. We're going to be having an additional committee meeting next Tuesday at 7:30. We have a very special guest coming into town. He's one of the world, one of the nation's experts in, even one of the world's experts in green energy and local energy independence. His name is Paul Fenn. He's authored and drafted state laws on community choice aggregation for energy in California, Massachusetts, New Jersey, and Ohio. And he's going to be here to speak about the emergence of green cities in California by their community choice aggregation law, and how Ohio communities might be able to accelerate the development of green energy under our own community choice aggregation laws. So I would encourage as many members of council to attend if they can, and to the public as well. And there will be, just for the press, there will be a press release coming out shortly for details.
So Tuesday at?
Tuesday, 7:30 here.
In this room?
In this room.
July 1?
July 1.
Yes.
And we're moving in the direction of not having a meeting on the 30th, because it's the fifth Monday. Thank you, Alahu. My second item is a request for extension of sewer. And so I gave each member of council, or rather Debbie gave each member of council the guidelines, policy guidelines for sewer extension, and they're there. And so Matt, are you going to come up and, somebody's going to come up on top, oh, Mr. Hayes?
Please, I have a couple of drawings and documents that will help illustrate what we're talking about, so you aren't having to totally destroy your imagination. If you wouldn't mind sharing amongst your two at times.
We're used to sharing, aren't we? Thank you.
We're located in the Plains. I'm sure all of you know Jeff Maiden, my employer. We are looking, or kind of, rather, is looking at potential developments on the west side of the city of Athens, just south of State Route 56, on the south side of the Hocking River. To orientate yourself on the first drawing, where you see the three parcels that are highlighted in green, blue, and red, if you follow in the north upper right-hand corner, you can see the Hocking River. And you can follow State Route 56 on the north and west side of the page. It's a little bit light on this sheet, I apologize for that. Other key features you can also note on this first page are the delineation of the city limits per the city GIS, the local school, as well as the railroad. Brent Hayes has engaged RJM Engineering to look at the conceptual feasibility of potential development of these approximately 300 acres. In specific, what development might be feasible on the parcel that's highlighted in green, which is the 84 acres.
So just to, I don't want to stop you, because this would not be a city utilities issue, but that you're asking for, the utilities first and then other things later, is that correct?
Right, today we're just talking about the availability of water.
And it was, because it does, you know, the Planning Commission, other people would be involved, it's a, it's a, okay, go ahead.
My intention of giving you this background information is just to set up.
It's good, I mean, it's good information, I just, they're thinking, oh my God, why are we doing this? And so now, there's the answer.
For the council's information, no one has set forth any plans. This is all just a conceptual idea at the moment. No one is proposing anything specific, other than a general inquiry as to the availability of water and sewer in the area. On the second page, we have a blow-up of the green area, which is what we'd like to talk about this evening. And you get to see a much better idea of the location of State Route 56, locations of the school, and in particular, a location of the existing eight-inch sanitary sewer line, which comes off of Elliotsville Road, south of State Route 681. Mr. Hayes is looking at potential development of the first 84 acres, and we have put together sort of a bubble sketch of what may come down the road. This is not exactly, there's no defined plans, or no buildings, not a single drop of engineering or planning has gone into this, other than to say, here's an idea of what the property may be able to establish on itself. Phase one development would be potentially a residential, potentially mixed-use apartments or condos, in a broad theory, with the more upland and wooded areas being reserved for a future phase, perhaps a mixed-use residential, perhaps a single-family residential. We show a conceptual entrance drive that follows the contours of the land, just outside of where the FEMA floodplain is shown, in a dark solid white line. And then nearest State Route 56, we show just an area that might be conceptual commercial, perhaps a convenience station, perhaps, who knows what it might be for, but just an area where it'd be suitable, right on State Route 56, for a commercial development. The issue we have with this is we are outside of the city limits, and we do have water main provided by Leax Water on the south side of State Route 56. So water is not so much of an issue, we are outside your water district. And our understanding at the moment is that if we do look for water, we probably have to go to Leax Water for our service, just because they're there. Your 10-inch water main stops on the far side of Margaret Creek, on the east side of Margaret Creek, at your district boundary, on the opposite side of the bridge. So it would be a little more challenging to extend a 10-inch line across Margaret Creek through that bridge. So we're working the assumption at the moment that Leax will be supplying water for this development, should it go forward. We do not have access at the moment to a municipal sanitary sewer, which is why I've shown the approximate location of the eight-inch sewer line, which is a gravity line, on the opposite side of the railroad. One of the options that we're looking at is the potential of being able to connect to the city sanitary sewer system. It's not the only option, there are other options that involve prepackaged wastewater treatment plants, in-ground systems, et cetera. But we just wanted to gauge the temperature of the council and see what the possibilities might be in the future of connecting to the city system. I've had a preliminary and very informal discussion with Nick Carr regarding capacity, and he does indicate that there is capacity within the eight-inch sewer, to his knowledge. Anything that we would connect to that would probably involve a pump station, which means we'd have great control over the amount of flow we could send to that eight-inch sewer to ensure that it wasn't being extended beyond its capacity, if it did have a capacity issue. Given the fact that it's an eight-inch line, and it's so close to the upstream end of it, it's probably running empty most of the time. Does anyone have any general questions?
What, is the school not on a sanitary line?
The school is on a sanitary line. I did not, I did not show it, because we would not be able to connect to it. Their sanitary line is integral to their pavement and their parking. It would be rather infeasible to go and suggest tearing up their pavement areas to get to their sanitary sewer. In contrast, the sewer that we're showing here is an open field, very easy to get to relatively. It's only approximately 1,200 feet from the nearest property corner to these proposed parcels.
There's a small problem, and I did talk with Matt quite a bit, and he called me and asked me various questions, and the land lab from Morrison School is there, that's where you'd send that sewer through. What's going to be the impact?
Well, because we're working with a pump station, we're not putting in traditional gravity sewer, which means we have the ability to bend and flex the pipe any direction we need to, to get around just about any obstacle we could ever want. Part of the problem is with a gravity sewer, is we have a natural barrier between this property and your gravity sewer, which is Margaret Creek. Because we'd have a pump station, a regional pump station, on our property, more than likely, if we're going to connect to the city sewer system, that piping that we would use, which is commonly either PVC or a flexible HD, high-density polyethylene pipe, we have the ability to direct that pipe around just about any obstacle without any adverse effect to any existing building or structure, landmark tree, if you will.
So where are you thinking of, you're going to have to cross Margaret Creek, though, eventually, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Right, and then it's going to be down where your lot has that little point peak, potentially, or?
The actual location has not even been investigated at this point. We just know it would be on the west side of Margaret Creek, out of the floodplain, wherever the most logical place it would be that would make sense for this development and future development. We haven't gone to the point where we'd say, yes, it needs to be on this little peninsula.
Somewhere in that mile, along?
Somewhere in that vicinity, where you see the hatched phase one development, that would be a logical place for it.
Okay. And so, now, here we are, with a request, a preliminary request, that would be followed up by much additional work. When we talk about sewer extensions, there are a number of principles that we've worked on before. And you've talked with Nick Carr, and he says that line has capacity, right?
Again, that was an informal conversation.
An informal conversation, okay.
I don't want to hold him to that, if he finds out with a little more digging, there did happen to be something that was...
Okay, and that is, that line, for those of you unfamiliar with this, is by the old seat cover plant, TS Trim, and I probably was funded by ARC, too, for economic development purposes. This is one of our small areas in the back of TS Trim that is potentially, at least, is called commercial, potentially useful as an additional development site. Anyway, owner agrees to pay all costs associated with the extension and maintenance of a sewer line. Assurances that the line installation is performed by the owner meets city specification. Owner understands that only one tap is available to the property. Services to multiple residents off said tap is prohibited. Service to multiple units within one building is prohibited. If said property is subdivided, additional taps must receive separate approval by council. In other words, we would generally be talking about a single-family expansion, and this is somewhat different. Tap approval expires if not installed within two years. Owner agrees to complete annexation of the property within two-year period from the date of the adoption of the ordinance. Basically, those are our principles that are in the policy. Now, this, these are not written in stone, but I, it's easier to have principles and work with what's out there, so. Questions? He has given us a wonderful set of maps here. I tried Athens County GIS, and wasn't getting anything new in this, but... Any questions? Overwhelmed, are you?
Yep. Well, I mean, I think the first question is about water. If Leax is going to provide the water, the first thing that we said in terms of provision of sewer in our principles is that there be city water service, and a lot of that has to do with the metering and actually getting paid for sewer service. Because you can't really turn off a sewer if people don't pay their bill.
And I believe that your realtor said that, Nick Carr said that it was, there was a surcharge he was thinking we would have, it's not in here, but would be something to work on.
Nick and I did not have a discussion.
Okay.
I'm an engineer, not a financier.
I know. Whatever. But this is certainly an issue. Debbie was good comment, anybody else?
No, the concept sounds, the concept sounds exciting, but principle number one...
The devil is in the details?
Yeah, kind of trips us up.
Always. Okay.
And so that would be, obviously, something we need to discuss a lot further, as well as, as you point out, details are not included in this at this point. But it would be wise for us to be involved in development of these plans, certainly.
Well, certainly the Planning Commission, then eventually us. And I, you know, I would propose to kick it upstairs and have the administration go back with a recommendation, but, but, Christie, what were you going to say?
This is the first I've seen of it. I'm a little bit concerned, it doesn't look like the frontage on 56 is actually, most of it is not going to be annexed in, if I'm reading the map correctly. Is that the case?
We don't show any proposed annexation lines. All we show is the existing property lines of the parcel and the existing city lines.
Okay, so the existing city lines...
That follows Margaret Creek and then wraps around the school, and, exactly, polymorphism right there.
Is this part of the city right there?
This is the river valley.
It's opposite the bridge.
Adjacent to the river valley is city property?
I believe that there's a chiropractor's office there, and the GIS has not been updated. I believe that little corner parcel of building right there is now part of the city.
I think, I think that's right.
They do have a childcare and facility there. Again, when you're looking at proposals, first I've seen of it also, without knowing use and the access... use and the access and the schools and the, you know, traveling public there, are one of the first things that we're seeing. And so, yeah, I think there's a lot of discussion to happen.
What capacity does Leax have in that area?
They have good capacity, as my understanding. They have a 6-inch water main and a water tower in the nearby vicinity that accommodates good pressure in that vicinity. Again, it's hard to talk about specifics because I, we don't, we haven't looked at this from the standpoint of how many users we eventually have. It's more of an idea at this point.
And you're proposing a single entrance into this total of 300 acres?
For the first phase, yes. For the entire 300 acres, I'm sure the city and the surrounding areas would want to look at the opportunities for multiple access drives for the obvious need of emergency fire. But again, we haven't gone that far. This is mainly, we're looking at this from the standpoint of water and sewer, not the, the rest of the details that come along the much more detailed plans.
Is, is the water tower from Leax Lurick, up in Lurick Hill?
I'm not familiar with the exact location.
We just had that fight over that other place, University Estates. I think it's close here, but that isn't of relevance to us. It seems that the potential developers have been talking with Nick Carr, so, again, we can.
And my conversation with him was strictly, where is your water and sanitary located? I did not get into what we were planning. I did not ask his opinions about development in essence, simply, may I say, your water and sewer pass?
But he, okay. All right, so.
Do you have a copy of the policies?
I don't know. Didn't you send a copy of the policies, Debbie, Debbie did, to the developer? So this is new, and I'd like the administration to come back with a response for us at this point, in two weeks. We'll schedule a meeting before.
Is the assumption that should go through the planning commission or are you just administrative?
I would say that the last principle says that it will go through the planning commission, but it probably wouldn't go in the next two weeks, whether.
I think we have one another week, week and a half.
July 3rd, is it?
Yeah, but you don't have final plans.
What?
I mean, it, well, it's, I picked it upstairs to use Mr. Goldsberry's.
It seems like if.
Yeah, it helps me.
If we don't have, I don't know, from, I mean, this is a description of whether it's possible to actually get a sewer line out there. And, you know, but we need some kind of recommendation related to, you know, all of this. I mean, it, it, when we've done agreements in the past to provide services outside the city limits and discussion of whether those areas are going to be annexed and stuff, they've been in the form of development agreements. I don't know if that's the right format, but we need something that spells out these specifics about, you know, who's paying, who's proposing to pay for things, is annexation proposed, you know, all of those questions. There needs to be an actual proposal, I think, that we can respond to.
And that was the intent of our coming to this meeting, was not to say, please make a decision on this now, but to hear your thoughts and your feelings regarding the next step, which will be, as you say, to come together with a more detailed conceptual plan that addresses those specifics.
Okay. But we have in the past, just to, to go back a little bit further, I mean, before our ill-fated development agreement experience, that we have, at various times, given extension of water and sewer when people met this principle, in an ordinance form, which was the older way to do it.
But that was water and sewer, and this is just sewer, so that, that's the kink and the.
Well, that's what we're asking the administration.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's what I would want to ask the administration, to, to talk to Nick and the sewer department and.
See if it's feasible.
See if, what would be a proposal? I, I don't know.
And even with all the PVC pipe, I'm very concerned about that land lab.
Actually, I'd also be looking at the conference of plan, see what it talks about this type of stuff. I mean, we, we're now revisiting the fact that we had development in this corridor. You know, where do we put another fire station? You know, little things like that.
I would assume a lot of this stuff would be sprinkled, but.
We assume, well, we don't know what it's for.
There was also, Bishop did a proposal to run a sewer line that would be for a new, looking for the materials from the previous example, that would have had a service from 50 going down the Margaret Creek corridor. It's about $2 million process to run the sewer through that area.
Up Bradford Road.
Well, no, actually through the creek bed, I think that's what Bishop had initially proposed. So that's, I mean, the commissioners aren't going to do that, but it was an idea at least. So until we hear from the, ultimately, the planning commission, all the rest of those things fall into place, but I'd like the administration to respond to this request, if you will.
Okay.
And, you know, I have a recollection that what's now Stages Early Learning Center, which was previously River Valley Community School, did actually tap in, and there was this whole discussion of that happening before it was annexed because of the paving of Morrison's parking lot. So I don't know if that line may extend beyond the school anyway.
According to the asphalt drawings in your offices, it stops right before you get to the bridge, your 10-inch line is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Do you need these? Do you want these back? Could we keep one of them? So you can keep a couple of them? Debbie, could you put these in council? You've got a couple of examples?
Thanks.
Michael, do you want these back, these nice pictures?
These.
Thank you. Okay.
Please.
Any other utilities before we proceed to finance and personnel? I was looking for two things, and I have to admit that I was not successful on one. I was looking to find, I did find my purple pen, however, the sewer problem map, the old G I S map. I have it through 2005, and I was hoping we could have a discussion, kind of kickstart some utilities planning in this, in the city. And to do that, I made a map. Pull the map out of the.
Thank you.
Just to go, take a walk down memory lane. And sometimes I don't pay attention, so I was kind of having some trouble. Anyway, there, just to talk a little bit about the past.
The previous news.
I think this was, this situation was occasioned by the comments in the paper when I was in Mount Vernon about how all the sewer lines in the city are old and blah, blah, blah. And I, you know, I was like, oh, goodness, what an idea. Anyway, so, in the not-too-distant past, there you go. All right, so this is my funny little map. Because I didn't have a G I S, I actually, I could have done G I S, but I didn't feel like doing it. Or probably couldn't have done it, actually. And I compared the last, oh, my time on council, really, except for a little bit over the Beckett administration. I would like to, first of all, start by saying that water and sewer projects take a very long time to get going, and our recent experience has not been wonderful. And so I think a little bit of planning would be desirable. Look at Fern Alley, was better the second time around. And then also Columbus Road. But anyway, so what I have is the Hendrick administration, 1996, 1988 to 1995, eight years, and everything on the map that's either blue or black, depending on the map you have, was done during that period. And so you can see that there was quite a bit of work done in the water area and also in the sewer area. For example, Franklin Grosvenor, a good mile each way. Now, we can look at it and say, well, I would have done it differently if I'd done it, but it's basically it, some Morris Avenue work. I think I have most of the locations, but I'm not 100% sure. But what you see is that we have, we did in that time period, replace a goodly number of lines. We also rebuilt some streets. We got on task and did them. The second period, 12 years, we did much less work, as you can see. I'm not sure, I can't remember exactly where the sewer or the water line improvements were on Union Street. You've got the storm sewer, very pricey, going down the hill on Playground Drive, where we replaced the water line earlier times. We had the famous 90-degree angle water lines out by the mall for that. The one place I could not remember to save my life was the southeast water improvements, which should have been on the first map, but now I think it's North Blackburn Road, but maybe it isn't. I was going to go back and check the ordinance to see exactly what the geographical situation was. Bottom line, most of the improvements in water were efforts to upgrade the lines to a 6-inch line often, for fire protection and to take care of problems. Okay, so why am I doing this, is the question? I would like to see somebody, somewhere, come up with a five-year plan, if you don't like five-year plans because of the rescue, you could say six-year plan, four-year plan. Somebody say, what are we going to do over the next time period? What do we have to do? You know, I, I go stand over and look in the hole when the guys are fixing lines, and they've told me they need to fix Columbus Road at the far end. They've told me they need to work on Fairview, and they need to do Joneswood. But, you know, I don't know if that's scientific or not. And I was going to take the old G I S maps and sort of prod somebody into using these, but I don't know if they've even been updated. I started to update them, but then I thought, a whole day on this? I don't think I'm going to do this. I'd rather make a baby quilt. So I went in the direction of maybe trying to get, I had Debbie ask around the city, where are the problems? I mean, we replaced roads and didn't do water lines, because water lines don't have to be replaced every, unless they're giving us trouble, even if they're old. Old lines, and the same is true of sewer lines. I mean, it's not like we're living in a third world country because we have old water lines and old sewer lines. As long as they're working, it's fine. Water is probably a bigger problem because it's under pressure. So I guess this is a, I was trying to incentivize the concept here. Halloween colors. By Halloween, I'd like to have some movement in the direction of, what can we do? I mean, the last 12 years, we haven't done very much. Let's get cracking, and let's get our infrastructure up to date on this. Anybody have a reaction? Actually, the mayor copied the black part and then I put the orange part on today. And I hope I didn't blindside him, because he's just new yet. But in a year, we're not going to be able to say that. We're going to say, where's the plan, buddy?
Yeah, okay, so what I'm looking at here, you're looking at mostly sanitary and water, not storm sewer?
Well, yeah, this is, this is what we appropriated money for.
Okay.
These were projects that had numbers that were, that were under the fixed asset accounting system.
Okay, didn't we do an intersection Elliott, wasn't Elliott Mill torn up one time for storm sewer, then, or was that something different?
That's part of the, that Playground Drive, I just didn't know.
Oh, okay, you didn't extend.
It's got the S, yeah, the S, and it only stops there at Chris.
So it has a few more dots.
It has, it should have a few more dots, yes. Okay, but the, you know, look at it and say, we think they'll get going. We need to, you know, we need some sharpening up here.
Okay, so the next question is, where do you have the money to do something like this?
Well, the next question is, what do you want to do?
Oh, okay.
That is, that is the appropriate question. And, you know, and I, I went down this road before with the previous administration, I said, what do we need to do in sewer? I'd like to really see the sewer lines on cable lane fixed. But they had to start with I and I. And you will remember, it was rather like bashing your head against a stone wall. In the I and I, we have six people working on the sewer crew, they could have taken care of it. So then my next comment to them was, why don't you tell, give me a proposal? We can stuff some pipes down the line, the play pipes, and get rid of the I and I, because there are other, I mean, I read American Citywide, there are ways around it that are, not dig up the lines and replace them. I mean, we have a limited ability to pay, but we could do something if we had a plan. So what I'm asking for, by Hal, well, that's maybe premature, but I do think, and it's probably, we need somebody here, too. I mean, the guys in the street crew, or the guys in the sewer water crew especially, whoever's working, they know where the problems are. I mean, that's what Tom Peters would say about the excellence, you know, the management excellence. You ask the guys on the line, and they'll tell you where the, they say, oh, you don't need to do that one, it just always, you know, like Curtis Street, you'll notice it's been replaced, and Curtis Street's going to break forever because, and I was talking to George about this, and he said, well, why can't they stop and change it? But there's a pump situation where the pump, the pump breaks the lines. The pump broke the lines in my neighborhood for a while, and they did adjust it finally. You know, if they go down, if the electric goes off, then you're going to have this problem. And so, I mean, I don't know if we have right now the existing personnel to do it. You know, you know my rant, I would like to see an engineer in charge of this. I would like someone who has our total picture in mind, someone who sees the city as a system, who says, okay, in five years, this is what we want done, in 10 years, this is the next thing. And it seems to me that we can do it if we work on it. Is that positive enough? Should we have a browsing? We can do it if we, all right. Anybody, any questions about this, other than where did I get my math making script? Yeah?
I don't have a question, just supportive of the idea that I would really like to see in this, when I was campaigning, this came up a lot with residents really wanting to see a long-term plan for how the city's going to address the infrastructure problems. I know most of it comes down to money, that's, that's really, all this is extremely expensive, but if we can see, and I think five years is too short, I'd like to see a 10-year plan for not only sewer and water, but for streets. And I know, I think Andy does have a plan for streets going out further than what we might have for other things. So I'd like to see a 10-year plan, perhaps, for all the city infrastructure that is really aging and causing problems around the city.
I'm aware that Nick Carr has some parts of water, a capital plant or maintenance plant for that, both for the sewer, water, and the plants themselves. I, I know he has a couple of spreadsheets on that, I could get them to you if you don't have them already.
Well, I've got the spreadsheets, but, you know, the thing is that you don't really get the big picture unless you put it on a map. You know, the spreadsheets aren't much good. So you say, oh, apple gate, once, okay, that's all right. Is that, is it all right or is it not? You know, I mean, that's my problem. I look at a spreadsheet in alphabetical order. What does it do? Not much. You know, I, I think that you need to upgrade the G I S, pardon me, I'm getting, I'm getting rabid.
Actually, to upgrade the G I S, I would suggest we, we hire a G I S person.
We have spent a quarter, a third of a million dollars on G I S, and I, you know, and I'm not sure we're still doing it, so.
Have we spent a?
Over time?
Third, oh, over time, yes.
You take a look, we've got, we had all the up-to-date equipment, we had people working on it, and, you know, we need to do better.
Right, right now, I'm trying to get a zoning map. I've been waiting for months.
I don't want to hear your troubles, I want to get a water rate map.
Anyone, anytime you want to take over, Nancy.
You've got more clout than I do.
I'll champion, I could, Mayor, Mayor.
You've got more clout than I do. I told you, I want to make a baby quilt, that's my goal.
I know.
I'm cleaning up my mess to do that. So that's my goal. I don't want, I don't, I want, that's what I want to do.
I would, I would argue also, too, that a number of these issues or concerns are addressed in the comprehensive plan, and one of the things that we're beginning to look at is the establishment of benchmarks and, and determining how we can appraise our progress. So I, I think this would fall in line with, with some of the ideas and issues addressed in the comprehensive plan and the committee.
It just so happens that Kent and I are in the public facilities subdivision of that committee.
How fortuitous. Then I can continue doing my quilting.
Okay, realize, of course, when you talk about trying to shun smaller pipes into, plastic pipes into clay pipes, you're reducing the diameter. With every assumption that everybody else is not reducing the water flow that they have, the tendency is to.
Well, this is only for I and I off of, off of Briarwood, which was never built to its capacity, and the plans are not the same as what is on the paper. And so there, I mean, there's, but, you know, it's just, I've been talking I and I, I've, my friend Debbie Phillips talks I and I pretty soon, all the rest of these people are going to be talking I and I.
What is, what is I and I?
Inflow and infiltration. What we do is we get too much water in the plant because rainwater's getting, I mean, it's still getting into our sewer system. And so it's something that we, you know, I would like to see a more systematic approach, not 43 feet a year. No, that is, that's exaggerating. It was more like 110 one year. So I asked for a report and I get that, and it's like, oh, okay, you guys can do better. You can do better, I want to see it.
Okay, and, and some places are easier to do than others. If I remember the Northwood Briarwood sewer line was a, was a bear to do, getting the easements, right?
Yep. Easements was a big problem there.
Yes.
Oh, but this was the one that goes down the hill? I mean, you know.
This one, one to everybody's backyard, I believe, wasn't it?
Oh. That's not Thunder, is it?
No, it's somebody's motorcycle.
All right. All right, all right.
You think there's a noise violation?
It's not a loving you. Depends who's...
Do you think it goes over seven decibels, if you can hear it inside?
I don't know, I can't hear as well as I used to. Anybody else? Any other infrastructure utility issues? Okay, so let's...
Just one point, this could eventually help cut down on, over time, they have to pay for line breaks and offset the cost somewhat.
I'd love to think that's true, but... Because there, because it's entropy. Three years, right? You know.
So we can't complain when the executive branch comes to us wanting money to fix this or to address these issues?
Well, not twice, though. I mean, not this, we can't, we can't defer, no more Fern Alley. I would ask about Columbus Road, but I don't want to start.
Are you done?
Yeah. You'd think, wouldn't you?
Quickly, if you all received an earlier iteration of the agenda, it had community issues committee on there, and we were going to hear from the clean committee regarding uptown recycling. They have deferred coming tonight and have rescheduled for our committee meeting on July 14.
Bastille Day, yay.
Bastille, maybe that's why they did it, I don't know, Bastille Day could be, but actually, they had several key presenters who couldn't be here tonight, so they, they felt they could make a better presentation if they waited till the 14th. So that, there went community issues meeting. So we've substituted with finance and personnel. And actually, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor and possibly the auditor. They have several appropriations requests that they would like to discuss with us tonight.
Okay. Some of it's minor, some of it's major, mostly little bits of money that have to be put in. We had a meeting Friday with Jim, Nancy, and Kathy. One thing is I'd like to do is appropriate more money in the 580 capital budget for the code office. They have about $20,000 in vehicles, and they need a new vehicle, and they need about 24 and change to get a Prius, and I'd like to get one for the code. They're short one vehicle, the vehicle they have is in bad shape, and I figured this would be another place to add a vehicle that's a hybrid. But as I say, and it was budgeted last year to the $20,000 mark, but it will take some more money to do that. Questions? This would be this, hopefully, the second hybrid car.
This is the new vehicle policy we're going toward, yay.
Well, it's one of the new vehicle policies we're striving to...
And so another Crown Vic rolls off into the scrapyard?
We hope. And, and speaking of scrap, too, since we're talking scrap, we have the two old Thomas buses, these are red buses retired from University Courtyard. Got an email from, I think, Transit, First Transit, McDonald's, rather, they need the room, we're expecting two new buses coming in, and we just need to get rid of those buses. They estimate a price, if you just scrapped them out straight out, it would be about $3,000. And if I believe it's over $1,000 and has to go through council as surplus, is that how it works?
We think.
So we'll need an ordinance to, at that saying, these are deemed surplus.
$3,000 each?
$3,000 each.
Okay, so we could ask for bids in excess of $3,000 for a couple, a little while, couldn't we? I mean, you notice, we had this, with the sewer system, they had the caking machine, and they wanted rid of it so bad. They said, well, we'll just give it to somebody down the street. And we said, go out for a bid, and they got $30,000 for it. No, I'm not expecting any $30,000.
Okay, the discussion that's going on within the staff right now is whether we do it as a local auction, we try putting on some kind of governmental eBay. The feeling is, if we put it nationwide, we have a better chance. But the, you know, ton per ton, $200 a ton, and the weight of the bus, that's the minimum bid right now. If, you know, the guy says that we can drive it to McGee, we'll get it for that price, but I know we can get more than that. But in either case, it has to go through you guys to do that. Okay? Since we were talking about scrapping out Crown Vics and things. Let's see, for the next reading, I'd like to suspend readings for the fire station repair on the second reading, which is going, coming up. It is an additional appropriation. What are you talking about? Oh, it is with additional appropriations, yes, it is.
We would like to be able to mobilize that first week in July, have that work start.
Okay, the other section is in the other administration, advertising, the 101-120. We've been doing a lot of advertising for positions. This is also, so we need some money encumbered into that or appropriated into that. What?
$12,000?
Go ahead, finish.
What did you say?
$12,000?
$12,000? We were thinking 10, but, you know, go with 10. Also, there's actually a fund line in there called Judgments, we may need some money in that, too. That, that goes into a lot of the outside fees that have been paid for, for various things, basically lawyer fees, activities. So those are the only two I'm thinking of in terms of appropriating money in there. See what else do I have here? I know I'm missing something, but I can't figure out what it is.
That's what I have.
That's it? Okay, yeah, then I'm probably not missing anything. What?
Prethings, buses.
Prius.
Prepping money into the...
And line, yeah, that's it.
Okay. That's it, then? Oh, and the suspension, yeah, that could be rolled out.
Well, we would have suspended last week.
I know. We thought we had the money in there, but we want to get moving quickly.
Auditor, did you have anything to add?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
All right.
I have no other miscellaneous. Any other questions or concerns?
The concern is, we won't be meeting on the 30th, it's the 5th Monday, so we'll meet again on the 7th, right? Except for, on the 1st, we'll have a meeting for the green, for the energy environmental committee, and then the next meeting of council will be the 7th, right?
Which will be a regular meeting.